And it is 6:30, so I'm going to call to order the Ashland Planning Board meeting February 24th, 2021. This is an electronic meeting. We are meeting via Zoom. Due to the current COVID-19 pandemic, the governor issued emergency order number 12 that waives the location requirement of public officials at a public meeting. This meeting will be conducted electronically. We encourage members of the public to join our meeting via our Zoom connection, which is always posted on the agenda and on the calendar listing on the town website. Gives both a video and a telephone connection. So, okay, we are starting and roll call. Paula Hancock?
Present.
Kathleen DeWolf?
Present.
Margene Badger, present, and Susan McLeod, our land use assistant, is also here.
Present.
First minutes, February 3rd. Let's do that.
I'll make a motion to accept the minutes of Wednesday, January 27th, 2021.
Okay. I'll second that. And roll call vote. Paula Hancock?
Aye.
Kathleen DeWolf?
Aye.
And Margene Badger, aye, approved. Okay. Our main issue tonight, I want to deal with beginning to look at the application form that we're going to create for the new commercial excavation regulations. So you should have a copy of, there are two pieces. There's the basic application form, which is going to look very similar to our other application forms. And then we have an application submission checklist, which will go along with the basic application. These are wide open to changes, and I've even got, I've got some other notes. Susan has suggested some things, so we need to talk about all of that. So, it's just the basic, let me pull up. We're going to share the screen, find the right one, that's the checklist. Okay, can everybody see that?
Yeah.
Okay. The front page looks very similar to our, all of our applications. Little, few little things. As we go through this, anything, anybody has for suggestions or changes, please speak up, because nothing is firm yet. We'll probably take a couple times looking at all of this. At the top, I, we usually have a little box at the top. Often it's just the application number or money received. I made this a little bit more inclusive, date received and the fees received. This is where we will put the application number. And then I also put ZBA approval date. Because a excavation site has to go through the zoning board first before it comes to the planning board. So we need to know that it was approved by the zoning board when it comes to us.
And do we need to specify whether it's a waiver or a special exception?
It would always be a special exception.
Okay.
Because it is, it is granting permission for something that is generally not allowed.
Not allowed, yeah.
Not allowed in any zone, yeah. So it's always going to be a special exception.
Okay.
Then, property owner information, applicant and agent. Now sometimes, this looks a little different because most of our... Okay, I think I've just spread this out a little more. One thing that, that Susan had on her suggestions was, do we want the name of the pit operator? Now, how might that be different from, how might that be different or the same from property owner or applicant?
I would think that would be an applicant, wouldn't it? You've got the person who owns it, the person who's representing them, and would the applicant be the person actually doing the work?
I don't know. Help, Susan. Okay, what, where would, what would be the scenario where we might, that, might need that in addition to property owner and applicant?
Well, I guess maybe the applicant you would have, you could have the official business name and then who represents the business?
Oh.
Because just even in the case of LW Packard was John Glidden.
Okay.
But the applicant itself was technically LW Packard.
Okay.
So just to clarify, the business and who is representing that business? Whether it's a president, a CEO, a sole owner, whatever.
Okay, so under, in the section with applicant, if we put, where have I seen something like this?
Owner-operator?
Business name.
Oh.
And...
Business representative?
Yeah, something like that.
I never even thought of that.
Because this would very likely be a business name going in there. Does that make sense?
Well, especially since we have seen some emails that have multiple, I, maybe the same person but using an email for one business but doing the business for something else.
Yeah, yeah. Now, if, when they start operating, obviously, I think on the, we haven't done anything with the actual permit yet, what that would look like. And I think on there it does ask for the person kind of in charge on the site or there, I can't remember the term, but that pit operator would generally be a business.
Yeah.
Yeah.
Or doing business as DBA.
Let's try, let's try business name or business representative or something. If we think of other terms that does that same thing. So under applicant, we would have an additional line there. Okay, so that's a possible, okay. Then agent at the bottom. Again, as, as all of our applications do, it makes reference to the letter of authorization. And we'll get to that in a minute, because we've got some questions on that.
This would be agent that would, that would represent the, the property owner in front of the ZBA?
In front of the, in front of the planning board, yes, yes. Yeah. Okay, page two, section two. Okay, the first part, eight copies of a site plan, 122 by 34 and 711 by 17, that's standard for us, for all of our applications. Complying with the requirements of section 13 of the Commercial Earth Excavation Regulations. We used to have some of this in kind of a paragraph, and I looked at it on one of the other applications, I said, it's, it's hard to sort out, so I...
Like a checklist, yeah, checklist is a lot easier.
So the next one, we wanted a digital or PDF version of the site plan. Then submit the application submission checklist, and that will come to in a minute. And for any items on the checklist that are not provided, one of the two following items must be submitted, a written request for a waiver or a written explanation as to why it's not included. Now, I know I've got the word item in there multiple times, so I, so that needs to be fixed. It's just, I need to come up with another word. Because I've got it in there about three times. So any, unless people don't, aren't bothered by that. I don't know, we can look at that, that's a, that's a minor thing in the, in the relation to everything else. Next item, submit the completed application package and all required fees at the town, Ashland Town Office, et cetera, no later than 21 days prior to the date of next scheduled planning board meeting. Our other applications say 20 days, I noticed. Should we be consistent with 20, or be consistent with 21, or leave the differences?
What is, what, what's the difference with, what's 21 signify?
21 is exactly three weeks.
Okay. Oh, gosh, you went through this a few years back.
Yeah.
Over, you know, exactly the three weeks.
Well, I think at one point we had a Thursday as a deadline.
That, which would make it the 20 days.
Yeah, and then we thought we might as well push it to the Wednesdays because at some point we decided that somebody would be in the office the, the day after a deadline to see if there was anything to process.
Right.
So that gives you that, that one extra day.
Extra day.
And again, again, we go back to whether we're talking calendar days or business days, and, and maybe you should clarify that as well. Because when, when it comes to the advertising, it can be calendar days, because you can advertise on a Saturday or...
Yeah.
The notification, as soon as it goes up, somebody can see it just about any time.
Yeah. Now, we've always counted this as calendar days, haven't we?
Yeah.
Okay. I can, we can add, we can put calendar in there. Think about, should we go back to other applications and change that, those to 21 days? The thought?
It should be consistent.
Yeah, yeah, I'll just make a note, we can... And then, submit one copy of the completed application and one site plan, 22 by 34, to the Ashland Conservation Commission, that's in the regulations. What we do if we don't have an active conservation commission, I don't know.
It goes to the BOS, I believe.
Probably, yeah.
And that's what they do for, that's what it is for shoreline.
Okay, okay. Okay, so we'll just leave the wording as is. Then the next little paragraph is same as what's on our other applications. Section three, description of your, of the proposal. Then section four is all the butters and professionals. And that's all the same as we've had before. Do we need any, on the description of your proposal, do we need any other wording there? It was kind of a generic direction, but if that's sufficient, then... I mean, we're going to get a lot of other material with many more details.
Yeah.
Yeah, so this is not...
It's nice if they can put a concise statement that then can use for all the notifications instead of having to go through all of that material and figure out exactly what the proposal is.
Yeah, yeah. So we'll just leave it as that and leave just that much space. Okay, so page, the rest of page two starts the butter list. And page three is a butters. Top of page four, the professionals. Okay.
You have to make sure that you specify that with the butters, there's, you yourself as the applicant also has to be included in the mailings.
That's what we haven't been clear on in any of our applications, do we? Let's go back to page two, section four. And on the first one...
Well, yes, it does say all parties concerned, but yes, somebody might not...
But it doesn't mention the applicant.
Yeah.
If we label the first one in some way as the applicant?
Well, you could put after all parties concerned, comma, including the applicant.
And/or agent.
And/or agent, yeah, you're right.
All the parties have to be duly notified and you have to have the proof in your, your file that they were.
Including applicant, agent, property owner too, right?
If they're different, yeah.
If they're different. Okay, so we need to fix the wording on that little descriptor under section four. Okay. And then again, that wording, we need to roll back into all of our other applications. I'm glad we're going through this. Okay. So back to section five, fee schedule, on page four. Go down, I'm forgetting to move things on the screen here.
When I read it, it looked good to me, but you do need the extra i's because the things that we understand.
Yes.
And, and think, yeah, that's, that's fine.
Definitely.
Yeah, it, it might not be read the same way by an applicant.
Okay, section five, fee schedule. Got application fee, $75. Engineering fee allows us to put something in there if we determine that it's needed. Sometimes that decision is made after the application is received, so that may come... Yeah, during, there's that little asterisk note down below. Advertising fee. I like, and then this was Susan's suggestion for layout here. First time we've separated advertising from a butters notices.
I think that's a good idea.
Yes, I think so too. And a lot of our advertisements are running close to $70 now.
I know, isn't that something?
Yeah, 68-ish, around there. And depending on if, depending on the type of project, it could be a longer ad. Possible.
Oh, the, the box size of the...
Yeah, depends, yeah, yeah. So advertising fee, $100. And then certified mail return receipt of butters notices includes property owner, pit operator, agent. I hear I use the word pit operator.
Okay.
Number of butters, times... And this is where, again, we've got a mix on between the two boards, zoning and planning, we've got a mix. Sometimes we use $10 for the butters notice. Sometimes we're using the current exact amount. Again, I think we need to begin to get consistent on some of these things.
Yeah, because if you give the exact amount, which is subject to change every time, whether it's just regular postage or whether they add something to the certified itself.
Yeah, yeah, it's subject to change.
Sometimes it's the weight, if you, if, if for some reason you had to include something other than just one single letter. For instance, when we had to notify the regional impact and we had to supply...
For the zoning board, yes.
Yes, we had to supply the, the rather lengthy minutes that accompanied that, and then they had to go into a larger envelope, or they ran something like nine, nine bucks a shot.
Yeah.
So... And then just, just...
Yeah, go ahead.
So just, I, I guess, you know, you're trying to, with the application fee, cover all the other administrative things, but like the, like the Glidden and now the Farnum, that were both 20 letters that went out there, that took an hour to process.
Yeah, yeah.
Create the letters, save as, next one, save as, next one, print out two of each.
Labels and everything.
Lick those disgusting envelopes and create the labels and, you know, just stick them on and get them all, all, all processed. So it, it is something more than just the, the exact postage amount that is required for getting those mailings out.
Yeah. Do we want to put a dollar figure in there for the notices?
Then what, then we have to change it anytime it goes up?
Well, so far, when we've, we've been on some of the applications, we've been doing $10, and it has covered, it has stood for, for a good while.
Okay.
Yeah, we haven't used it that often with, with site plans, because we haven't really required a full site plan in a while. For some, like newer builds. We have to do it for all subdivisions, which can be as easy as two or three and as many as, I think, 32 for Efar, so...
Why don't we, for the time being, put $10 in there? We can, this, we're not going to finish, we're not going to agree on everything tonight.
Right.
So it's something we can come back to. But for the sake of, sake of discussion right now, let's put $10 in. And that, that's, that parentheses that says includes property owner, we really should, okay, butters notices includes property owner, agent. And again, this is the first time we've used the term pit operator so far.
Well, then we probably should stick to pit operator.
And we should use that somewhere on the front page too. Now, the, when we send out the butters notices, we, right, we include one for the applicant. Correct? Yeah. That's what we just did on the, on the list of the butters.
Yes.
So if we change this, includes property owner, applicant, agent and professionals, going back to the terms we use in that list.
That makes sense. Just to keep everything consistent.
Yeah. Let's try that. Have to work with spacing on that one. Okay, and then permit fee, $50, and that's the, that's the item that is right in the RSA, that the permit fee itself cannot be more than $50. So we have no wiggle room on that one. Okay. And then there's the note, "Board reserves the right to require payment of additional fees or costs that may be required during consideration of the application." Okay. Section six are pretty much the same items that are on all of our other applications. I don't think I had to change any wording here, it was all pretty generic. And then the front page five, the signatures. Then the net, the last page, page six, is the letter of authorization. I've changed spacing a little bit, that's why it may look a little different from others. Haven't changed any of the information on it. But here's a good question that Susan brought up. Should we have this letter notarized?
So Susan, why, what, tell us why you think it should be notarized.
And I was just going to ask where, if she saw that somewhere.
No, just my, my personal experience with having gotten permits for our own building venture here, at least twice between the electric co-op and, and one of the permits, we had to have it notarized. It's easy enough to do, I mean...
Oh, yeah.
If they bring it into town, either Patsy or Catherine, I think is also a notary.
I think so.
Or any bank that you go to. I mean, we did our notary drive-through.
Okay. That's a new one. So that's a thought. And again, does, is it more important for this particular application? Or is it something that we might consider for all applications?
What would be the purpose of having it notarized? That everything they, though, out on this is correct, that they are who they say they are?
No, this just deals with the agent.
The letter of authorization.
This is only for the agent.
If we hadn't dealt with, with a certain party before who owns a certain segment of the mill area, there's a squiggle that comes through for his signature.
You are, you are correct, Susan, thank you, yes. Okay, I agree now.
More or less an absentee.
Yes. I, I made a comment about that, so yes, I'm glad I asked you to expand on it, and now, yes.
Yeah, now, the old letters of authorization also just had signature and date, it didn't even have a section print name. I've put that in, because that's another piece of, at least knowing what that squiggle, who that squiggle represents.
Right.
So let's look at adding the notor, notary piece at the bottom of this. And we'll figure out what all we need on that.
I think it also, it also came up recently with the voluntary merger is required to be notarized.
That's right. And that requirement comes from where? From the state or registry deeds, Crafton County?
Yeah, it might be that it's, that is the official thing that is filed as opposed to a MyR or something else. So somehow to make it as legitimate as possible, I think it's required to be notarized.
Yeah, so that's something that is submitted to another agency or office. This necess, this isn't necessarily used in that way, but it still goes in our files for our information and for our assurance that that person did designate the other person to represent.
Yes.
Yeah.
And, and whoever has to take the responsibility for making sure that this was filled in and the information is accurate.
Now... Okay, so we are... So the notarization is in reference to the property owner's signature. Correct?
Yeah, and I think it's just more important that if they're not actively participating in this whole process, that they're somewhere else, like this, you know, and they never make an appearance or anything, it's just nice to have on file if they, they are legitimately aware of this whole process and have signed off, signed off to somebody else to actively represent them in doing anything with their property.
Okay. So we'll do that. Excuse me.
It's all, it's all that greenery behind you.
I know.
Spring hay fever time.
With the dewdrops listening in the background.
Yeah. One, let's see. Another question I've got. Type of operation. Again, Susan, this is something you had in one of your, your kind of working draft. And what would be, when you say type of operation, what are the different types that it might be? Trying to think this through.
Yeah. Well, I guess certainly like you think about the sand pit in Bridgewater. It's a sand pit. As opposed to a quarry where there'll be most likely blasting and crushing. And I mean, I'm not familiar with the industry to know that there's variations. But there might very well be different levels of, besides crushing, there's also those shaker things that.
Yes, screening.
Yeah.
Screening.
Yeah. So so there are very various things that will happen in the way of machinery and whatever possible noise comes out of them or whatever. So fuller explanation of quarry versus pit. And then for that matter, when you talk about a pit, my conversations with Center Harbor about the Ambrose operation was that it was approved for excavating, say ledge above ground. As soon as they wanted to start excavating and creating a pit itself by going below ground level, they had to reapply for a whole new different operation. So distinguishing maybe above ground from, from excavating below.
Yeah. So if we go back to, if we want to add that, if I've just looked at, if we go back to section three where it has description of your proposal. On the first line under, if we change that section three and then on the next line have type of operation. Just a single line for them to add that and then the description of the proposal right under that. Again, that gives us that brief explanation all in one place, but that makes sense. We put it there or do we want that on the front page?
It certainly helps to have some, and I guess if they're, if they're not sure what to put in there, I guess we could research a little more for giving them the options to check a box or something.
Yeah, yeah, that I, that I, I'm not comfortable with that yet because as you said, I'm not familiar with this type of operation. This's new to me. How about right now, we added in under section three along with the description. A one line for type of operation and a, like a three or four line space for description. So key word and description kind of thing. Let's do that temporarily. Another thing that I thought of is is this a new application? Is this a renewal, permit renewal? And I'll get to a little more about renewals later from the webinar that I listened to, but this could be, for instance, we've dealt with one person that has an existing operation that every five years comes in for renewal. So they've got to submit something. So we need to think about where maybe to put something about kind of a checkbox, new operation or renewal. And there may be another option or two that could go there.
Yeah, expansion or something like that.
Yes, expansion. Yeah, would be another. So I think, I think something like that needs to go somewhere on here.
On the first pa, on the first page.
That should be on the first, yes.
Could there be like a little box where you could check off?
Yeah. Similar to what we did with the property zone.
Yes.
Yeah.
Maybe underneath there. Under section one.
Well, don't want to mix it with, if we put it under applicant. Well, somewhere, somewhere on this first page, we've got to put it. We'll play around with spacing and so on, see what, if it, if it's too close to the property zone box, it's going to look exactly the same and someone may skip it. I want to separate it from that a little bit.
Oh, you could have a different a square box instead of a rectangle.
Or somewhere, yeah, we'll figure out where. And if we come up with any other options, so new operation, renewal and expansion at this point. Okay, so we'll add that on the front. Okay, that's, that's the basic first part of the application. Okay, now. Okay. Go to this one. Okay, this is the checklist. This is a checklist that would go with the application. Section. And this comes primarily from section 13 of our regulations. I'm going to insert a question here. Does everybody need a final print copy of this whole regulation? It is, it is on the planning board page now and on the forms and document page now. But let me or Susan know if you want a, so we've had printed copies of, in draft form. Let Susan or I know if any of you want a final printed copy of the final approved multi-page document here, 17 pages, but because sometimes it's easier to look at it on paper. So anyway, back to the submission checklist. Back to the submission checklist. Most of this comes from section 13 in the, in our regulations that is actually titled application submission items. And that is the bulk of what is on this checklist is the first part are the general items. Signed a dated application form, current of butters list and so on, all of those things. And then starting with A, A, one. And then B, the first A is excavation plan, B is reclamation plan. And again, all of those come directly from our regulations, word for word and the same numbering and lettering.
Okay, you've got excavator here. Is that the same as pit operator?
Where do you, where is that?
On the B, B under A.
Okay, that's, and that's in our regu, our regulations. So that could be same as pit operator, yeah.
So if, if we're going to use excavator there, should we use that on the application form?
Okay. Or just make a note. Okay, so anyway, the first item at the very top. For any item on the checklist not provided, one of the two following items must be submitted, a written request for a waiver or a written explanation as to why it is not included. And I've added, I've put three columns to the right. The column labeled applicant, I figured the applicant can use to keep track of what they've put in their package. The next column would be for our use. Actually, the last two columns, and I've got it, I'm going to change the heading a little bit. The last two columns are planning board use only. These are for us to use. One column where we can check that we have received it.
Why are there brackets? What are the purpose of the?
I started doing that. I saw it somewhere else. It's not necessary.
Okay.
Minor. And then I said, then I got looking at the sec, the next column and I said, why did I do that? So anyway.
Thank you.
Make any difference. So.
Ignore.
Yeah, PB received, we can, that's where we can document that we have received all those pieces. PB waived goes back to that very first description. If the applicant hasn't inclu, has not included it or that's where we can see it whether that's going to need a waiver or whether we did waive, but we'll have to work with that column a little bit. Because we are allowed to waive a lot of these if it's necessary. And it's, first time we have to do this, it's going to be tricky thinking about what we should or should not waive. I'm not looking at this as going to be a fast, easy process. Okay, so anyway, we do want the first item I listed was section, from section 11, performance guarantee, evidence of ability to be bonded. I don't know how that is initially presented. That will become part of the discussion as we work with the applicant through all the details. Is there something that they would or could provide upfront that would show at least some indications that they could be bonded? And I'm going to turn to Susan a little bit on this because she's dealt, I haven't dealt with any of the bonding or surety issues before. When you, when you did Berry-Goss development.
Yeah.
Did you ask any general question upfront before you got into the details?
No, I, I remember though, there, there is that section where we have the options that they have for the financials. Capabilities.
Yes. And that's that section 11.
Yeah, as they embarked on something of this magnitude that they would have lined up some kind of financial backing of some sort with, whether it's with a surety bank or some other, one of the other options we've given them. So when we go to that, when you go to that section to ask about providing a bond, I mean, maybe you won't talk about the exact amount at this point.
Right, we'll be ready yet.
They have a financial institution or some other way of saying that, yes, they will be able to put up a bond.
Okay, okay. So should we just leave that there? Just as general as it is?
It certainly, it certainly seems like this shouldn't be approved without a bond for restoration or reclamation or some, some follow-up.
As you said, at this point, when we receive the application, we won't know how much yet. Or exactly what form it's going to be, but some indication from them. So then the next down, signed a dated application form, current of butters list filing fee, actually filing fees should be 122 by 34 site plan, 711 by 17's, digital format, application in one site plan for the conservation commission and copies of any required local, state or federal permits. Now, some of those permits may not be in place yet when we first receive the application. They may not have, for instance, their alteration of terrain yet. Permit.
Yeah, it depends on what they're going to try to.
Yeah.
Yeah, they can't get out, they can't get planning board approval with, without them being in process. So they could even.
Right.
Submit the applications that they've submitted because at this point they're going to have to some, have some more of the groundwork done to be able to submit a site plan as to what their plans are to the planning board.
Okay.
I know that they've played it where they didn't want to put too much into it upfront unless they got approval to move on with it. But when they get to the planning board, they have to have a little more information.
Yeah.
Well, alteration of terrain as, based about the same stuff the planning board.
Very similar, yes.
They should have at that point, at least an application.
At least applied for it, yeah. Started the process, yeah.
Yes.
Okay, so then A excavation plan and number one, and then the small letters A through R are exactly the items that are listed in our regulations. Same wording, same item numbers and so on. And then number two is also part of the excavation plan requirements, number two, small A through G. B, reclamation plan, again, comes directly from that same section of the, of the regulations. And these are all the items that they need to submit for reclamation plan. Now, so those are, those items are real straightforward. That's what the, what our regulations say in the application submission section, what they have to submit. There are a lot of other items throughout the plan that do become in a sense requirements or items that must be discussed. And for instance, so I don't know how long we want this checklist to be. This is, this is the basic, these are the basic requirements for application. When we start considering the plan, when we start discussing the whole project with the applicant, there are a lot of other sections in our regulations that we will have to go through point by point to verify with them. For instance, there are items, there is one item in, under the prohibited projects that says the excavation may not be within 50 feet of a disapproving of butter or 10 feet of an approving of butter. We don't know that, they won't know that when they first submit the application. During our discussion, we will find out what a butters are, are in favor and what a butters are not in favor. So this, that item could come into play later. There's a, we can establish the times in which they operate, times of day, days of the week, times of the year. But that gets into more of the, the discussion as we start going through the whole regulation. So I'm not sure whether we want to add to this checklist at this point. I don't know. I, what's, what's, what we're going to have to do is before this, the potential project, if it comes to the planning board. When we, if and when it comes to the planning board, we are going to have to be very familiar with our own regulations. And we're going to have to go through all of our regulations with the applicant, step by step, piece by piece, so that we don't miss anything. It's not going to be a one meeting and we're done.
You know, that's where, this one might be the basic that goes with the application. So the acceptance of the application is complete and everything. This would be a good tool to be able to check everything.
Yes.
You might want to create second one for the planning board as it processes or discusses the application in, in the discussion mode, that you have your own checklist that will point by point pull out what is necessary to discuss and cite where it is in the, and the regulations. Be able to go back and quote whatever it is or look it up.
Yeah.
It would be the best tool for, for the, the board members themselves to be able to make sure you don't miss anything. It would be helpful if we have either guidance from LRPC or where, or the, the board elects to have a, some type of professional help with this. It would help, be helpful that they would also use it to become familiar with what the regulations are.
Yeah, yeah. I like the idea of using just this checklist as part of the application. Since that is very clearly connected with our regulations as to what has to be submitted. Since that is very clearly connected with our regulations as to what has to be submitted. And I like Susan's idea that we also create a longer, more detailed checklist for us to use as we are going through the discussion with the applicant. So that we don't, and that we'll have to go through, we'll have to work through our whole set of regulations to start creating that list and work with it. Does that sound logical?
Yes.
Yes. And I would almost. I'm wondering, somewhere on the application, the, the front part of the application. We should make reference to where our regulations are. And, and that the applicant must be familiar with the details of that, something on the, somewhere on the, on one of the pages of the, of the main part of the application, that the part that we looked at first. We need to make reference to our regulations, where they are.
You've got that empty box above note.
Yeah, yeah.
Yeah, I'm pointing at my screen like you can see it.
I'm doing the same thing, holding something up.
Man, right there. You could put something in there.
Yeah.
Because this is, this is getting pretty dense.
It is.
By the time they get to page three.
Yeah.
Yeah, well, that's the end, yeah.
Yeah, yeah.
But yes, we should, whatever, we should always have a notation where we have these for our public viewing, where they can access the information.
Yeah. Okay.
Yeah, and you also, as you get to things about enforcement, that, that also implies some type of inspections. And that's where you can consider setting up an escrow account to cover the cost of inspections.
Right.
Especially, again, as Center Harbor does, they do drone flyovers and take multiple pictures to have on file. So if you can't get in there and walk around and have some idea of what it looks like, you have comparative annual pictures to make sure to see how things are going. And the town wouldn't be able to afford its own drone necessarily, but even the cost of.
Renting one?
Yeah, getting one of those companies that does it for realtors and everything to, to yearly do the inspection and take a number of pictures, whatever. But make sure you have an escrow account for that, because again, they should be footing the bill for anything like that.
Right, right.
And with those pictures come back to the planning board, in other words, we would have a
Oh, yes.
Digital record.
Yep, absolutely, yes.
Susan could access if she wanted to.
Definitely.
Yeah, we would have, we would continue to have them on file. We would probably also share them with maybe the code enforcement officer. And all the usual people, you know, the fire department or the whoever. Just, it's better to give them to absolutely everybody. And if they say, what am I doing with these? It's like, well, we're covering our bases.
Right. Okay, that's just kind of a, kind of a first look at.
Yeah.
Good job, you two.
Okay, now. Couple other things, let's see.
This should be all set for another, what, 30 years, maybe?
I hope so. Okay, let's see. Not done with, not done with excavation yet. Let me see where I want to go next. Okay. Recently, I did a webinar that was put on by OSI. And a couple of the planners there. And it was called, wait a minute, you gotta. Ah, I didn't get this in the right, just a minute, I've got to stop this for just a second here. This over where we can see it. Okay. Share screen. Share. Okay. A week ago, I did a webinar, which was put on by New Hampshire OSI. They are starting a monthly webinar series called Planning Lunches at Noon, P L A N.
Oh, how cute.
Well, that, you know, not being able to do face-to-face training, they've come up with another way to do it. So one day a month from new, they'll have a one-hour webinar. I don't know what the future titles are yet. But this one on the 18th was called Digging Into 155E, An Overview of the State's Earth Excavation Law.
How apropos.
Oh, yes. So I will, this sheet that I put together with my notes, I will send out to everybody. Because on this sheet, it has, there's a link to the page where they list their trainings, their training sessions.
Okay.
So that's a place to watch for any future things. But for the webinar.
The email, that will be in our email box as well.
Yes, yes. And if it doesn't show up, if it, if for some reason it doesn't show up in our planning board email, I get the email separately and I will forward it to it, just to, just to cover our bases. So this February 18th webinar, they, ahead of time, they sent out the PowerPoint slides. So there is a link on the sheet that I'm going to send you that will have a link to the PowerPoint slides that they used. Then a couple of days after the webinar, they posted the recording. So you could hear the planner's explanation of the slides and some of the additional comments. What it did not, what the recording did not include was the questions that people asked afterwards. And I wish they had, I wish they had included the audience questions and answers. But anyway, the main recording with the explanation of the slides is there. Then they also have a link to additional resources that are right on their OSI site. I took a lot of, I didn't, my notes here are not all the notes from all the slides. These are just some of the key or interesting little tidbits that I thought were important to pull out. Some of it came in some of the later discussion. They talked, they started with the background of the law and they talked about also responsibility of the planning board, the regulator, and responsibility of the applicant. And then they talked about some court cases at the end. So it is good, it would be good for you to go back and at least listen to the recording. That piece of it. One, they mentioned that the, the law is more on compliance with standards. It's not on how to get the permit. The focus of the law is on the standards of operating and reclaiming and enforcement standards. And the planning board is the regulator, although the voters through a warrant article can change who the regulator is. But we are the regulator. This, this is something that will impact us a little bit. Pits that were in existence prior to 1979. And they can go, those pits can go back two years from 1979 to show that they are exempt from permitting, but they have to prove that they were operating legally at that time by whatever regulations were in place at that time. We will have to double-check on one existing pit operation that we have in town. I think we need to do a little research as far as dates, just to make sure that we're covered. Being, and being exempt from permitting is not the same as being exempt from operational and reclamation standards and local regulations. Just because you're exempt from a permit doesn't mean you're exempt from all the other regulations and standards. So they may, they emphasize that. Grandfathering is a term we use all around. I just liked their, their way of expressing what grandfathering is. Grandfathering is a use that was in compliance with the zoning regulations that were in effect at the time when that use began operation. Okay, that doesn't mean they're exempt from any regulation, but they were in compliance with the zoning regulations at that time when they started. We can, we use two terms in our regulations and in the RSA, commercial excavation and incidental excavation. Incidental, for instance, is when you're building a house and you've got to do some excavation to clear out your lot, to make a spot for the house. That's incidental to construction of that house. So that is exempt. Commercial excavation, and they emphasize, a lot of people think it's just, it's commercial only because you're selling what you're, what you're reaping. And no, just because it's being sold is not, is not the only trigger for commercial. Because somebody could barter away what they are digging up, and that's, that's, and depending on the amount of material that's leaving the property, that could become commercial. Incidental, some municipalities will define incidental a little bit more specifically, maybe a number of cubic yards or number of truck trips or timeframe length of the project, particular project. So there are different ways, again, these are just kind of suggestions and options. Evidently, excavation used to be listed as, as a topic that was required to be addressed in a master plan. It is no longer. I didn't realize that, but it is not in there now. I didn't realize it was at one time. Yeah, they suggested. And this was somewhat in relation to a master plan. When you're looking at the land in the town and what it's viable for and how land can be used and so on. They suggested, look at county soil maps, because that will give you an idea of areas that have the certain types or conditions of soil or gravel or other material that might be suitable for excavation. So if they're not being used in that way, those may be something just keep in mind that those could possibly be suitable. So it's just kind of a little bit of forward-thinking and, and planning. They did also strongly suggest to do a current inventory of all existing pits, both current and abandoned. So that you have a record of what has been out there and what is currently out there. And they also suggested you get a tour of an operating pit, so that you know how they operate. And that might be kind of interesting to do, since we're all inexperienced in this field. Renewal, this is, this is what triggered my thinking about the renewal option on our application. 155E does not address renewal at all. It just talks about a permit and the length of time of the permit and what you have to do to get a permit. So looking at 155E, technically, if you need to renew your permit, you go through the same process again. What they did recommend is the planning board can streamline that renewal process. The checklist that we're thinking about putting with our application. If five years from now, that applicant comes in for a renewal for another five-year permit. If all of the information that applicant provided for the initial permit is all valid and up to date and all in place, you can streamline that application process. So that could be another use of a waiver column. Because, you know, with certain, certain notes that it's a renewal, their site plan is still in existence, is still valid, et cetera, et cetera, et cetera. So you can, the planning board can streamline that process for renewals. And they summarize, they mentioned two state permit processes will come into play with excavation operations. Obviously, there's the DES alteration of terrain. If it's over 100,000 square feet. If that site is also within a protected shoreline area, the triggering point is over 50,000 square feet. That's what would trigger that. And they also mentioned DRA, and I hadn't thought about this. There are three times, three things in the DRA process. There is a notice of intent to excavate at the beginning of the tax year, and it has to be done before they start excavating. So at the beginning of each tax year, they have to estimate what they think they will excavate. Then at the end of the tax year, there is a report of the amount of excavated material. And then there is an excavation tax that's collected by the town. And they also suggested to get copies of those DRA reports from the town. That gives you information as to how much activity is actually happening. So the DRA piece I didn't know about. And then some other comments that came up as a result of questions. Obviously, with the alteration of terrain permit, you can't hold up the application until they get that permit. But if they have that permit or are, or get it within the time period that you're discussing this whole project, get a copy of it, because there is a lot of detail in there. As Kathleen, you said earlier, that a lot of the information that the alteration of terrain permit asks is similar to what we need to know for the excavation anyway. But if you have a chance to get all the details in that permit ahead of time, use it. Use that information. Someone asked in a, about an incidental excavation. And remember, that's the example, if you're building a house and you have to excavate some, some material on that lot to, in order to build your house. So that's an incidental excavation. Someone asked, can you get an exemption for incidental excavation in case you do that in the future on your property? And they said, no. Incidental means incidental to construction, which means you should have permits for construction in hand.
Yes.
You can't, you can't get that incidental exemption just in case you might want to do that five years from now. No. Someone asked about a municipal sand and gravel pit. Obviously, because it's a municipal operation, just like municipal buildings. Don't have to, do not have to go through a full site plan, but the planning board does have input into it, observations and recommendations and so on. So municipal sand and gravel pit is exempt, but they did emphasize town really should set an example and follow its own regulations. That's the good way to do it. Evidently, someone must have been dealing with that issue in their town. And for conducting onsite inspection, use your, use your checklist, whatever checklist you've got. You know, the checklist that we had with our application and any other checklist that Susan suggested we make based on all of the regulations, use that checklist when you go out on the site. Know ahead of time what you want to see. And they also said, if you need a third-party engineer to help with inspection, do it. Yeah, so those were, so those were key things that were kind of extra, other than just the, the general explanation they went through. Those are just some of the key points they pulled out, that I pulled out. But I will send the sheet to you. It's interesting to view the recording and it's. Paula had some questions when we were talking about webinars. Paula had some question about webinars. And I hadn't done much with webinars until just recently. Yes, I've watched PowerPoint presentations and so on, but a webinar sounds, is a little different. So I sent the link to the recording of the webinar to Paula, so she could see how it operated. What was nice about this one, they had a few little glitches. They were a couple of times, they were on the wrong. a couple of times, they were on the wrong PowerPoint slide for what the person was talking about. Because two people, two different, one person was talking, another person was operating the PowerPoint. So as in face to face, sometimes you're on the wrong slide. Yeah. So they had a couple of sound issues a couple of times through it. But at the beginning, the way they operated, they were using Microsoft Teams. That's what they were using. And at the beginning of the webinar, they asked all of us to turn our microphones off. And what else did I say, Paula?
Turn our cameras off.
Cameras, microphones and cameras off while they did the presentation. And they announced that right at the beginning. They actually sent us the PowerPoint slides ahead of time. So that, so I, I had looked through the slides just to get a sense of what they're going to be talking about. So at the beginning of the presentation, they said, turn your microphones and your cameras off to just listen. And there was, there was no downloading of software, anything. I literally clicked on the link in the email and that was right there.
Oh, that's nice.
Yeah, and most webinars are going to be like that. You're very seldom, are you going for, for a real webinar, you're very seldom, if you're ever going to have to download any software. So they went through the slides and one of the planners was, was speaking to the slides and explaining and adding detail. And then at the end, they had a question answer period. So that particular Microsoft Teams has a chat feature and they also had a telephone connection, because there were some people that, that connected via telephone, which is why I think they sent the slides out ahead of time. So the people on the telephone could, could see the slides. So when it came to the question answer period, then if you wanted to, you could click on chat and type in a question. And then one of the presenters read the question and they responded to it. There were a couple of people that called in a question by phone. And they responded to that. So it became more interactive at the end. At the first primary part was just reading and listening. Viewing and listening. And then they opened it up to questions at the end. So it worked out very well. It was a nice, easy one hour. And it, it, so it was, so also, so in summary, I'll send the sheet out to you. If you want to look at the recording of that program, go ahead. Then one other thing, speaking of webinars. Got one more thing to share. So everybody's getting into webinars. That excavation one was through the New Hampshire OSI. NHMA is also doing a lot of their training by webinars. There is one coming up on March 23rd called the workings of a planning board. And this is the the announcement sheet. And I, did I include that in the
Yes.
mail materials? Okay. There's a link at the top. The registration is now open. So if you just go to this page, and I think at the bottom of the page, there's a link just to go right into registration. And all they're asking is your name and your email address. That's as easy as the registration is.
Okay.
Okay, and then I, then you'll immediately get a re, a confirmation on your screen and you'll immediately get an email confirmation. And then that, and you will get in your email, you have a personal link and password to log into the, the webinar when it, at the time. So this is coming up on March 23rd, workings of a planning board. It's, this one is a two hour one, there's no charge for it. I think they may be using Zoom, I'm not sure. But it looked at the meeting number and password format was the same as our Zoom formats. So if you're, if you're interested, go ahead. I am going to, I am doing it. I figured it's about time for just a quick refresher. I think Paula has signed up for it. So it's, it's up to you. There are, every so often, I check the NHMA calendar to see what's coming up as far as trading. And I'm going to share with the zoning board, there's one coming up for the zoning board. After this one, yeah. Okay.
Okay, what's offsite exactions?
Off, word, is that on? Oh, offsite exactions. Oh, I see, right, right, right here.
Yeah. Do you know what it is?
Yeah, I don't, premature development, offsite exactions.
Susan?
I don't know.
I have never heard that term.
And what's a pre, what's a pre, I, I, first I thought maybe it was a typo. And I didn't know what premature development was.
Scattered and premature development.
Yeah, scattered and premature is, is one of the, you have to look up what they exactly mean by it, but it's one of the ways that you can deny an application for a development if there's not enough information in order to proceed with.
Oh, okay. I thought it was something more involved than that. Okay.
Okay, but that's good.
Now, this, this, knowing the territory is also going to be done by webinar.
Okay.
April and May, so I'm guessing they aren't rushing to do any in. And you know what? They, they may never do it again because this certainly is a lot cheaper.
It is. It's cheaper for them and it's cheaper for us.
Yes. Renting a building, have them, have the people come and provide their coffee and other little.
Yeah.
Yeah.
Yeah. So, so that is, I think, all that I've got. Susan, any updates on anything?
Well, I guess for next week's public hearing, I've been doing a number, I've been doing some reading on, on what's junk yards and I think the first thing you're going to have to determine with this case is the type of business it actually is. The fact that they do advertise that they buy junk cars and and salvage yards. They have to be okayed by the selectmen first. It's a selectman that issue a permit, two permits. First for the business itself and then for the location is appropriate for the business. And until selectmen do that, the operator can't get the state license. The state license is dependent that the local governing body has approved it. So I think the first thing you, the board is going to have to really explore is the extent of the business that's actually being conducted. And if it's appropriate, that other things have to be done first in order. The site plan review isn't enough for him to get his license. It's the governing body that determines that, especially that junk yards are not allowed in town by zoning.
Okay, there, there are going to be several things we'll have to discuss. And Susan, you'll be sending out copies of all the materials that we've received for them so far before the meeting, right?
I, I believe that.
Did you? Did I, did you do it already? And, okay, I'll go back.
All the paper, yeah, I did the paper copies that everybody could have them to review for.
Okay, okay, I'll stop in tomorrow. Yeah.
And I'm, I'm not sure, but there might have been an inspection conducted yesterday. And if there is, I'll find out tomorrow and ask for any reports if that is the case.
Okay, yeah. And we'll work with what information we have. We'll figure out what decisions we need to make. Yeah, okay. Also, okay, so that's next week. That'll, that'll be the primary. I think that's going to become our primary issue of discussion next week. We can look back at the changes on the excavation application format. I'll tweak that a little bit. We still will need to look at that a little bit more too. Yeah. Zoning board. The, and I think we mentioned this at our last meeting, or, well, maybe not. The excavation application at the zoning board for the excavation project, they were denied their special exception. The applicant has filed a motion for rehearing. So on March 11th, the zoning board will meet and the primary decision will be whether we grant a rehearing or not. That will be a decision at that point. We do not conduct the rehearing at that time. Because if we decide to grant, if we vote to grant the rehearing, then that has to be posted and noticed in all the usual manner, butters notified, et cetera. So the rehearing probably would not be until the April meeting, I would assume. So that's where that's at. And then however that turns out, it may come to the planning board or depending on how it turns out, it may not. And we, we won't know until the zoning board meets and makes those decisions. Yeah. What were the primary reasons they asked for rehearing? One had to do with the fact that they felt that most of the objections that the zoning board had, most of the reasons for denying the special exception were also issues that could be dealt with through the normal planning board excavation regulation process. That was one of their reasons for asking for rehearing. What was, there was, what was the other?
Well, one of their arguments was that it was an appropriate use of the property because there weren't too many other uses it could be used for. I mean, they, they seem to have made a point that no resident would live anywhere near that, the highway, which is a point that you could argue.
Can be either way.
I guess because it wasn't emphasized about the, the actual being on the aquifer or certainly the access running through the wellhead protection. And I think their argument anyway would be that that would still be the DES and planning board to, to address that issue of holding them to the standards that are set for protecting as best they can.
Yeah, so it will, if it gets to the rehearing, it will be an interesting process.
Right, because they'll probably use those same arguments. If, if they're denied again for any reason, if they go to Superior Court, the same argument would be had. Because those were the criteria that was being disputed. And you never know with court decisions, but they might say, you're right, that it is made, it can be dealt with in the planning board, so. The only argument is a special exception shouldn't be granted on this particular property and the reasons for it would have to be strong enough.
Yeah, yeah. So I think it makes it all more, all that more important that as we go through this and get ready for, if it comes to the planning board, it's going to be very important that we are very familiar with our excavation regulations, what's in them, what we, what our parameters are and all the little details that we need to cover.
I have a question. Is it the ZBA's place to say that the planning board could take care of that issue, whatever? That, that bothered me. To me, that was like passing the buck. ZBA has a job to do and to say, well, it can be, it can be handled at the planning board level. That seems kind of vague and arbitrary in a way.
But on, on certain issues, that is true.
Right, but, I mean, but it, but is it the right thing to, to say that when you're, you're making a decision? That, you know what I'm saying?
I know what you're saying, absolutely.
Yeah.
I don't know a good answer to that question.
No, no, because that kind of, you know, that, to me, that's like just hot potato.
But what the, all the zoning board is dealing with is, is that an appropriate use for that piece of property?
Yeah, but I kept hearing references, well, it can be dealt with on the planning board. And I wasn't sure, is that the place of the ZBA to make that app, you know, assertion?
A ZBA decision can include conditions.
Okay.
Yeah.
I mean, I only, I already said on one application, it was done in five minutes, so. That was my extent when I made the quorum on the, on the ZBA.
Okay, one last thing. One last little thing, and we're not some recent questions I think we need to think about when we're looking at general site plans and excavation application in particular. And not going to go, and I'm purposely not going to go into discussion of these tonight. I think what we ought to do is look at these questions, go back to our new excavation regulations. Especially these last four questions. And where in our excavation regulations would these be dealt with?
I noticed that the word inspection comes up and I'm pretty sure no inspections have been made. Or who would have made them?
Yeah, anyway, these last four questions, these four questions would relate specifically to an excavation.
Is this our homework? Is this our homework?
Kind of, yeah, yeah. I mean, and it, and I think it's a good exercise because that will help us become familiar with what is in our regulations and where it is. This first question is, is more of a general question. I think it, it could be related to our specific potential application. Let's talk about this one though, just this one. When looking at a site plan review application, how do we know whether the proposed project is close to conservation of butters or current use property? How do we find that out? We have any kind of application and there is a long list of, say, 15 or 20 of butters. And other than a few key organizations that might key us in to conservation status, such as Squaw Lake Association or, or that type of thing.
I know, I know the.
How do we, how do we find out?
When we have our GIS, it could become one of the layers. Correct?
It could be, yes, and probably should be, absolutely.
That, that, there could be an overlay or layers. I think there are layers that you could click on in it, which it would then overlay
Yes.
that information.
Property and current use conservation, yes. But how do, how do, otherwise, without that, how do we find out?
We've been doing it from our memory.
Yeah, a lot of it is, is
institutional knowledge.
That's it, that's it.
Yeah, with the, with that last application, it was because I communicated with SLA and SLCS. And that's when I was informed, well, as, as easement holders, we are considered a butters.
Yeah, yeah. And just, now I think if we look at the property card, current use is indicated on the property card.
Yep.
But I don't know about any conservation or easement, conservation easement status. I don't think that's on the. But I don't know about any conservation or easement, conservation easement status. I don't think that's on the property cards.
It should be because, again,
Should be.
technically, those go in perpetuity and 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 transfer with a property.
Yeah, there may be some other document in that thick property file that would mention that, but it's not on the property. I don't think it's on the property card per se.
No, and maybe that's worth a discussion with the it it influences the assessment of the property as well.
Yeah, yeah.
Should be listed there.
Yeah, yeah.
I mean, it was more straightforward when I lived on the farm that had the conservation easement. The easement was granted to the town, so the town Conservation Commission was the one who annually did their inspection and whatnot. And it was pretty clear that it was on our property card as to who was the easement holder, but it doesn't seem that that's the same system in place.
Yeah.
And there's enough property in the town of Ashland.
Yes.
That has easements on it that it definitely should be noted.
Now, we have a list in chapter of the master plan. We don't know whether that is current.
I'm guessing not.
Probably, probably not.
There's a few of them that now are contiguous with Witten Woods that are coming to play since then.
Yeah.
That that's they're calling it the Squam Uplands.
Now, Kathleen, having been on the Conservation Commission, does the conservation typically have any list of all properties in some form of conservation or easement?
Martine, there were years that nobody even took minutes.
Okay.
There was a very, very big gap of no minutes.
Yeah.
No, and you know, that's the type of stuff that most people did not want to do being on a Conservation Commission.
Yeah.
That, you know, I used to call it the birds and the bees and the flowers and the trees. But as far as doing nitty gritty documentation, no, that was not a high priority on most. And I said, most of it is because I read documents and and phoned the information that way.
Yeah, so.
We do have a map, I believe, up in the files that shows most of the that came from yeah, SELS. Yeah, they provided maps. Remember, Susan, I said that was probably the last map that came that we used to get them from Roger. And he'd say, would you like maps? And I go, yes, yes, please, because, of course, that's the easiest thing for people to be able to look at and understand where it is. But that doesn't show some of the new areas that were added to Witten Woods.
Yeah. So simple answer this to this question, it's there's not one easy way to know that.
No, that that's why the GIS, once we get it, hopefully, somebody's going to have to be trained. Oh, I forgot about that. There's going to be some training involved and you'll be able to add stuff like that. And and then anybody could put click it on and and find that information.
Yeah, yeah.
That's my understanding.
And it will have to be updated. Yeah.
Right.
Kept up to date.
Because a lot of it's dependent on granite, which is kind of difficult at times.
I know.
It depends on you to update them. They don't automatically update it. It's they depend on local.
Right, yeah.
Local governments or or conservation entities to constantly update it. So
well, like Marty, when we were trying to find the FEMA maps, you know, what did we know where they were being kept?
The flood map.
We could have spent days trying to find that information.
Yeah. Okay, so that's it. So these other four questions, I'll send this list out with the agenda or actually before I send the agenda out. So these other four questions, take a look in our new excavation regulations and find where we have the power, the planning board has the power within the process to make these things happen.
Do you get a prize if you find them all?
No, I'm going to have to look through in detail, too. I haven't answered the question yet either.
Oh, that's another thing.
Yeah.
You know, a lot of times I've told people to go to forms and documents and then I realized they've got to go to a planning board form and.
Well, let me see if that brings to mind. Let me see if I can bring up the website. And go share screen. Okay. Okay, here's the website. I have made some changes just the last couple of days.
You have.
Under under forms and documents, I didn't, I under forms and documents, when you go click on land use.
Okay.
A little while ago, I regrouped these things. I've got the ordinances and regulations here. And I've got the application forms here. I have added the commercial earth excavation regulations. That's our new one. So that's here. Okay, what I did do, yes, yesterday and today, yesterday, under the planning board, I've rearranged some things. I've got members right at the top and land use assistant, contact information, meeting schedule and the meeting dates and application. These are the areas that pine board is responsible for. And if you click on one of these regulation of subdivisions, it will go down to that little piece. You can click on return to top and it takes you back up up to here. So there is so there's a brief explanation of site plan review process, subdivision process, lot line adjustments. I have now grouped these. They used to be scattered on this page. I have now, similar to the forms and document page, I've now grouped all the ordinances and regulations. And I've grouped all the application forms. Okay, I still have some work to do. I still have some work to do because I want to put some navigation links up across the very top to get to the different sections here. Okay. But I you I used to have the regulations scattered under each of these individual pieces. And the forms were scattered, so they're now going to be all together. All the ordinances and regulations are here and all the applications are here. So I'm in the I'm still working on it. Which brings to mind, Susan, lot line adjustment really is the same application as subdivision, isn't it?
Yeah.
We may want to look at a double title on that one.
I would think so.
Well, we'll look at we'll look at that. I did not renew the link. There is a so I've left that unlinked right moment.
I I think it'd be easy if somebody you could just say click on lot line adjustment instead of subdivision application.
Well, subdivision is is a term that people know and lot line adjustment is a term that people know. So I think, but I think maybe maybe that can be combined into one application with a double heading at the top.
Okay.
Well, look, I'll look at it.
As long as you don't.
Susan and I will talk about it, too. Take a look.
As long as you don't confuse the applicant as to whether he's going for a subdivision or a lot line.
Yeah.
These two might.
Follow the same exact rules, though. They have to be
They do.
public notice notification.
Absolutely.
And they have to be filed at the the registry, so
Which is why.
Subdivision could be creating additional lots. Lot line is dealing with at least two lots. Just the boundary is moving.
Here's the basic definition up here, subdivision process.
Yeah.
Lot line adjustment. Yeah. But if if we make a common application, we could still have the two links, but both go to the same application.
Oh, okay.
Yeah, we'll figure that out. Yeah, yeah. So I'm still still working with this page a little bit. If you and if you've got any suggestions to make this page easier, let me know. But I do want to, I think at least I need to put up here some navigation links. Regular ordinances, regulations, applications, minutes, you know, some things up here that will go right down to that part of the page to make it easier to find. Yeah. Because this is a longish page, a lot of stuff here, plus the master plan, too. There's another hole, not all the minutes. Okay, that's all I have.
You've been busy, Martine.
No. Oh. Okay, anything else for tonight or for next meeting?
Which will be next Wednesday.
Next Wednesday. Yes.
So Susan, are you going to give us copies of the RSAs in our folder for junkyard and salvage?
Certainly could do. I have I have a stack of them that I've printed out, so I could probably.
Oh, can we give out for handouts for people?
Well, she's got one file of single copies of lots of lots of things, so we'll have.
Oh, okay.
Yeah, because what I usually do is I find the RSA, I copy it, I paste it into a a Microsoft Word. Then I have it on file electronically, so that way I can make copies or I can send it out.
Yeah, yeah. So we'll go through and see what all we need for next week. Okay. I think it's time to adjourn.